We. I'll be. For the safety meeting.
I have boxes of these.
Hand them out the polls.
Yeah.
It's going to call the council meeting to order. All right, so let me call to order this regular meeting on the board of safety today is Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022. Participate, this is a hybrid meeting and participating in person here in the city hall auditorium. Our commissioner Benedetto, commissioner McCloud, commissioner Battle and participating via Zoom. I have commissioner Cottrell and we received notice that commissioner McGilroy is not able to attend this evening. So before we get into the agenda items, could we please stand and pledge the flag? Okay, item number one on the agenda this evening is a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Second by commissioner McCloud, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? From public comments, questions? Okay. Moving into item two, I will entertain a motion to accept Officer Ramon De Santos. Ramon or Raymond?
Ramon.
Ramon, thank you. Ramon De Santos as a regular member of the Toronto Police Department effective July 18, 2022.
So.
Thank you, commissioner.
Second.
Second by commissioner Cottrell. Floor is yours, chief, any comments?
Officer Ramon has done a great job over the last year that he's been out there. He's been a huge asset to our department and we can't speak enough about his his willingness to serve and his abilities out there. He's been doing a great job.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from June 1st, 2022.
So.
Second. Commissioner Benedetto, second by commissioner McCloud. Questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Extinction.
One abstention for the record would be commissioner Cottrell. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special meeting minutes from July 18, 2022.
So.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And second by commissioner McCloud. Questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to utilize state procurement contract number 17 PSX 0024 for the purchase of uniform equipment from New England Uniform LLC of Danbury, Connecticut in the sum of $29,770.15 to be paid out of the 2022 JAG local VCP grant as further explained in the purchasing agent Penny Zuko's letter dated July 27, 2022, which was approved by the city council on Monday, August 1st. You have a motion?
So.
Thank you, commissioner Battle.
Can they approve it before us?
It was pending your.
Oh.
Yes, yes.
So.
Second, second by commissioner Benedetto. All right, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six. I'll entertain a motion to utilize state procurement contract 19 PSX 0220 for the purchase of ammunition for the fiscal year 2223. The estimated budgeted amount for these purchases is $24,500 as further explained in purchasing agent Penny Zuko's letter, again dated July 27, 2022. And again, approved by council pending pending board of safety's approval, correct?
So.
Thank you, commissioner.
Second.
And second by commissioner McCloud, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept police chief Baldwin's reports from May and June of 2022.
So.
Thank you, commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Second by commissioner McCloud. Questions on the report? Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept fire chief Warren's reports from May and June of 2022.
So.
Thank you, commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Second by commissioner Cottrell. Are there questions on fire chief Warren's reports? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nine, I want to do a motion to accept the E and S provider activity reports from May and June of 2022.
So.
Thank you, commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And second by commissioner McCloud. Questions on the activity report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10, I'll entertain a motion and consider business by the volunteer fire departments.
So.
Thank you, commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And second by commissioner McCloud. Questions, oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Floor is yours to. Our.
Go ahead, my dear. Right now. Hope you guys come. Well, chief, we got a trophy. Remember the course. Oh, sorry.
A week from Friday?
Yeah. Well.
Is it a rebate?
Not gonna run. The next Friday. That's gonna be tough. I'm gonna start fresh on the road now.
Yeah.
All right. Before I move into the next agenda item, we need to add an agenda item. At the request of the chief, we would like the board to consider in addition to the agenda for discussion and vote. So the first motion is to amend the agenda by adding a motion for the approval of the acquisition of four, I see four proposals. This is two, an award, the award, the bid to cloud city drones aboard Rhode Island. Is this two drones? It is two, okay, yeah. So the addition to the agenda is to discuss and to discuss the acquisition of two drones to be acquired from cloud city drones aboard Rhode Island. Do I have a motion to add it to the agenda?
So.
All right, so I have a motion and a second commissioner Benedetto, second by commissioner McCloud to add it to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any? Aye.
Right, motion carries. Everybody did receive, all of the board of safety members did receive the recommendation from Penny, okay, good, all right. So motion that I would be looking for is to approve the acquisition of two, they're called unmanned aerial drones for the Toronto Police Department. It is the recommendation of purchasing agent to award the bid to cloud city drones of Warwick, Rhode Island for a total of $18,079.74. And this would be pending city council approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, commissioner Cottrell.
Second.
And second by commissioner McCloud. Okay, floor is open for discussion if there are questions.
I just have one question, it's pretty obvious. Why did you choose this one over the other one? I mean, it's a couple of issues right there, you can read them and it's probably the reasons, but I just, you know, I want to hear because it wasn't in the package, that's all.
We, when we went out for, for bid and we look at the various different companies, this company came out on top as far as their ability for their service ability, their ability to deliver. We received references from our purchasing agent from different organizations that had used this company and the references were very, they're very well received. The, the, the individuals who had purchased this had no issues with, with this, this organization. The other thing too is that we want to try to make it as local as we possibly can. They are from Rhode Island. If we have any issues with our UAVs, it'll give us the opportunity to be able to go over there and get the items repaired, should that be the case. And again, we did, an awful lot of research went into this. I want to credit Lieutenant Johnson, who has actually been tasked with the, that is being overseeing our drone program. He has been trained. He's gotten his, through the FAA and other licenses to be able to fly, fly this. We're in the process of training another individual that'll have the option, that had the opportunity to, to fly these drones. There's a lot that's involved in this and Lieutenant Johnson has done a significant amount of work on this. And it was his recommendation and through the process, we came up with Cloud City.
Thank you. So chief, they have to get certified, correct?
Yes, sir.
And how long is that course?
No, I don't. It, it, I think it's a couple, a couple of months, it takes a few weeks.
Because it's a $9,000 drone, we don't want.
It's, yeah, it's extensive and plus the FAA requires certification for that. And I'm sure our insurance carrier, Kerma, would, is requiring that as well, so that's, it's, yeah, it's not, it's not a toy, it's not something that anybody's going to be able to fiddle with, it's going to, they have to be certified.
Okay, so this is, they're going to be operational and like both different, like one part of.
No, 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 they're only going to be utilized as we need them. Most departments are now going to the, they're advancing their, their technology within the agencies for, to better do our job for public safety. And they'll be deployed as we need them. They're not, it's not going to be a constant flying of these, they're going to be utilized. You know, one drone is larger than the other because we're going to have the ability to, down the road, to add on to that for, which is called a flare, there's a flare program, which are flare attachment, which is a heat sensing unit that we can, we might be able to attach to this drone for, looking for missing people. Heat signatures is what that, that thing does. Also some night vision issues, things along that line. So they're going to be utilized for investigative purposes for, in the event we have an active shooter incident, will we be able to get an aerial view of things along that, that line? They'll be used for missing people that are in, in the force in the area. They're going to be used for documenting crime scenes, accident scenes. So we've used, we've actually had, Avon PD has a drone program. And there has been an occasion where we have used Avon and we asked them to come out and help us with documenting a scene of an untimely death of, specifically is, is one of the scenes that we asked them to, to come out and help us with. And also we have, the state police also have a drone program right now and they're available for, for our use, but right now it's, it's more conducive for us to have our own program and are to be able to better provide services for the city.
Are there any other questions? I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we'll back into the regular agenda item number 11. I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So.
Thank you, commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And second by commissioner McCloud, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chief Baldwin, anything else to add this evening?
Just this past Thursday on the 28th, two, two of our officers had graduated the academy, that'd be officer Kyle Rickvishous and Joseph Frabino. They are currently, will be getting their FTO training. So it'll be a 10-week program and then once they're done, they'll be out on the, out on the road in patrol. Two of our candidates just got off the FTO program, officer Powell and was it? And officer Castillo are just got off their FTO program, they successfully completed that program, so we have an additional two on the, on the street right now. I also want to, so right now our total, a lot, our total numbers is 69 with an authorized strength of 81. So we're down about 12 right now, 11 or 12 people. We did have interviews, commissioner McCloud, again, we appreciate your support in that. We had interviews a couple of weeks ago. We did offer, we did give four, or how many conditions? We started before, we started with four conditional offers and unfortunately, as we do their backgrounds, they are being dropped from the process. So we continue to struggle to find personnel and we're just going to continue to keep pounding that drum and trying to get the people interested in the positions. I want to recognize Lieutenant Tom Rulo, who just completed 25 years of service. He is just entered our drop program, so we're very excited to keep him on board for a few years. I also want to recognize Detective Keith DeBlaine, who retired last month. He completed his many years of service with the city as well. He was a, he's a huge loss to our department. And he's moved on to other things right now, but again, both, both, both of those officers are just, they stand out as being among the best, amongst the best of our, our agency. Last night was national night out. We visited five neighborhoods, it was all well-attended. I want to thank Representative Cook, obviously the mayor, commissioners McCloud and Benedetto for participating in that. Also for commissioner McGilroy and commissioner Battle, who both hosted those events. We visited five neighborhoods last night, very well received. We received emails appreciating our efforts and coming out and again, it was, it was, it was a good night last night for that. We've got a offer from Trek Bicycle out of Newington to test. They're offering us two e-bikes to test for our trails. It's a three-week trial period. They're going to deliver and train our officers on how to use those e-bikes. There's no obligations, so we're going to give it a shot. We're going to see what it's like and see what, that may be a potential, something we can do down the road to enhance our patrols on our bike paths. We are getting ready to, we just advertised the middle school, the board of ed has approved a middle school SRO. They have budgeted for that, I've been in touch with superintendent Labowski concerning that. We are in the process of getting that position filled for the upcoming school year, that'll be for the middle school. We attended a human sex trafficking event, the mayor was there to issue a proclamation, which occurred at Co Park on Saturday. That was well-attended to bring awareness to the human sex trafficking that's taken place throughout our country and throughout our area. We also, I can't speak too much on this, but many people are aware of the fact that our detectives and again, with our partnership with the fire department, we did a, a marijuana seizure on Burness Street that consisted of 926 plants with a street value, a DEA estimated street value of $2.8 million. It was an elaborate grow operation and our officers were very, very, they did a great job. They're, again, we're, we're, you know, we have, we have issues in our town when it relates, when it comes to narcotics and marijuana and things along that line, but you don't hear too much about it, but I can assure you that our department is working very hard and working diligently in trying to combat these, these issues. We also had a, another arrest last night where our officer arrested an individual from Holly Place. 32 grams of crack cocaine was seized along with 16 grams of fentanyl. And a Smith and Wesson 45 caliber pistol was also seized and some cash was seized. This individual's wife was also, there was a prong warrant for her arrest out of Bristol. So she is being charged as well, again, goes to the efforts of what our officers are doing out there and are specifically our state, our detective Baranowski, who is with statewide narcotics, he's doing a great job and I can't say enough about him. I'm going to let Captain Brown speak a little bit about some of the training that's been going on as well as some of our palavins.
Sergeant Baldus and Sergeant Goska just completed a week-long commercial motor vehicle class, mainly at the focus of accidents and to help the AIT, both of them are supervisors on our accident investigation team. In this commercial boat, motor vehicle with air brake class will help them conduct the investigations and assist as we go down the road. Our goal is to eventually get them or someone else into a commercial truck inspector school to also, so we have one in town with us to, in case there are any commercial motor vehicle accidents. We have four officers just complete Alice training, which is an active shooter training. And we mentioned it last month, they're completed and we've already had some requests by some businesses to come in and discuss that with them. As far as power, everybody's, we had the summer fest this weekend. And the turnout was a little bit less than last year, but was still a success. We completed two golf camps and CSI camp, which was a big hit at the PD. Yeah, upcoming, I think there's two more camps left, or I know there's two more camps coming up. You have a volleyball camp, it's the first time Pal's going to do a volleyball camp, I believe. It's August 8th to the 12th. It's at OWTS. And the basketball camp, I think they call it making the play or something, that's at the middle school, August 15th to the 19th.
Other questions for chief or captain?
I would just like to add something, as you think, the PAL program did a great job and also thank Barraco for supplying the backpacks and the people that donated the supplies to, and the clients that packed all those backpacks.
Yes, I think there was over 500 backpacks.
I just have a quick curiosity question, when, when you, you might have the answer. When you, when you see a growing home like that, you know, growing that, that, that amount of cannabis now? Does that usually go, grow and go somewhere else? You know what I mean? It's just a random house of somebody tried to get out of the mainstream perhaps, or do you think that is marketed around here?
It, it could very well, I mean, we, we don't know where it goes, it goes.
I'm just curious.
It goes into, for lack of better terms, it goes into the network, so wherever that is. It could, it could be used by members within, people within our community. So there's no, no telling where this goes, but this was a, this was an extensive, incredible operation, so I, I'm, it, it wasn't a, a local type of situation where it was, it was for local dealers. I think it was a lot more extensive than that and as I stated, I can't get too much into it, but, but there is, this investigation is absolutely continuing. We're working with the DEA, obviously the state police and other agencies as well.
And I think the only thing that I would add to that is that particular property, the transfer of title to the current property only happened within the last year, year and a half. So I think that that's. Yes, yeah. Other questions on either, for either chief or captain?
I got my next category, I'm sorry ma'am, emergency management. We are currently, our COVID positivity rate is 11.77%. COVID is still, and I, as I mentioned at every meeting, COVID is still a serious threat. There are people that are getting ill as a result of the COVID situation. We, the state believes that this 11.77 positivity rate is underreported because a lot of people now have the home test kits and they're testing on their own and they're staying home or staying isolated from other, you know, from, from being within the community. So again, COVID is, continues to be a situation that we continue to monitor. Also, monkeypox has been hitting the news lately. Jeff might be able to speak a little more on that, but right now in Connecticut, we have 39 reported cases, according to the CDC. We are surrounded by states, New York is the highest number of monkeypox reported states with 1,617, which is obviously on our border. Rhode Island has 24, Mass 134. So nationwide, there are 6,326 monkeypox cases. We are obviously concerned from a public safety perspective because monkeypox is transmitted by exposure that, with individuals, so we need to just pay attention to that. Monkeypox is, seems to be trending up as far as the number of cases are concerned. The CDC has mentioned that they are going to, that the vaccination program is forthcoming or actually in the works. Connecticut is slated to get some vaccines down the road, I don't know exactly when that will be. So again, that's just a situation that we need to pay attention to. We're also prepping, we're getting into the height of hurricane season right now, so we're obviously prepping for potential tropical storm development in the Atlantic basin that may affect us down the road. We are, the unfortunate commentary is, is that the New England area of Connecticut is overdue for a major hurricane. So obviously we are prepared. We're also obviously prepared for severe weather outbreaks as we have these hot weather episodes and spells that are taking place. Come tornadoes and thunderstorms, as, as many of you heard of, I'm sure Colbert just had a tornado last week going through, through Colbert, even though it was on a lesser scale. It was still a, an event that is worth noting because it's so close to home. And finally, in our cooling centers, the governor has announced heat emergency, our cooling centers are open here in city hall. This, this auditorium is our cooling center for, through Friday during normal business hours. And the senior center is open for seniors. So that's all I have, emergency management.
Thank you, chief. Chief, 40.
Right now, we're currently looking at replacing all of our AED units, which is a total of six units on our front end apparatus. Because the ones we currently have are aging out and replacement batteries. Kind of cost prohibitive. Not to mention the interoperability to work with our partners, Trinity and things like that. So what ends up happening is the current units we have, we put pads on somebody prior to Trinity getting there. The Trinity medics get there and they have to just take them off and can't use them because there's no more adapters available. So it just outlasts a bit of life kind of thing, so we're going to be looking at doing that. We're also looking at getting together with some of the area departments and doing collective training together and hopefully doing it up at the Wichita County Fire School. One of the things that we're looking at is in October, doing a flashover simulator and we hope to get the volunteer departments involved and whoever from the city department together to see if we can kind of fill the ranks together with the other departments to make it cost efficient for all departments involved. So we're looking at that. The next thing we've been actively looking at is replacing our records management system, otherwise known as RMS. The one that we currently have is outdated and really doesn't fit the needs of the department that well, making a lot of duplication of effort between all the different levels of people reporting on it, whether it be for payroll or just doing our collective headquarters reports and things like that. Scheduling and a lot of things that we can truly benefit from. Probably going to get together with chief pretty soon so we can see if maybe we get a collective unit. But unfortunately, a lot of times the needs of the two different departments are different, but there may be something that we can maybe find some grounds together that work. Along with, I know you were talking about replacing the CAD side, so that might be something that we can partner with.
You're actually included in a, in a meeting that's forthcoming, we'll be, I was going to be talking to you about that. So, yeah, exactly. Deputy chief Trip will be part of that discussion, so we are at, we just had a meeting with. As the board had, had authorized us to go to Next Gen, which is a CAD RMS system. And I know Chief Tawee, when he was here, we were looking at potentially converting over. So we have the money budgeted and authorized and we're actually going to be working with the fire service on this as well, so.
And I, and looking at it, just preliminary, it really, from a budgetary standpoint, shouldn't affect us that bad because we're already paying for the system we have that is not making what we have. And we also have a training program that we use, whereas if we look at a certain RMS system, they might do both. And we can lump those things together to make it, to stay aligned with what we're actually paying now, so that's dope. The unfortunate news is one of our boats that we have a headquarters, our rescue boats that we use, the inflatable, the stern on it, which is the rear of it, has come separated on seams due to age, the glues have just like. The glues have just let go and things like that. We've got a couple of quotes to replace it and. Well, it seemed cost effective to do it, the. Company that's looking to do the replacement said, well, if you get to this, because of the age of the boat, you're probably going to have to replace the bottom as well. And that now doubles the price. And now you start to get in the realm of just replacing the whole boat. So we're trying to figure out what is the best bank to do, because if you start just chasing problems, you're never going to solve them and you're just throwing good money at that. We're in the process of hiring and recruit. We start interviews tomorrow with personnel. Unfortunately, this process is being rushed quite a bit, because we have a member who had put in his intent to leave. Probably in August, and we're trying to get this new recruit in the Fall Academy, which starts at the end of August. So the timeline is very compressed for us compared to what it would normally be, where you can prepare for it. So more to come with that. I'd like to recognize Assistant Chief Shelby. He just completed his drone training, so he's going to be working for the PD now. Kidding. So he's gotten his FAA, or FCC or? FAA, sorry, certification now, so he's capable of doing some things and maybe we can see if we can partner and get together and do that stuff in the future. And I'd also like to take a minute to recognize some members of our department that were involved in a rescue of a citizen from a building fire in June of two thousand. Twenty, she came by the firehouse to extend her gratitude and it was pretty emotional and it was really great to see. Her up and about and being healthy. So that was a great thing, a feather in their cap, I think. And the last thing is, we started talking with the city, at least the administration side. About moving forward with our negotiations, which are in arbitration right now, but hopefully we'll see some headway in the very near future. But it's a matter of trying to get all parties together and being summertime, not quite sure how that's going to play out. And that's all I have.
Questions for Chief Board?
Chief, just a quick question. Is that why we got two drones?
I didn't know.
No, that wasn't the plan. He was doing this on his own. I just think it might be a.
And I have one more question. Does the boat still float?
No. We do have one at the Northern stations and we also have incidents that, so if we need to do something, we're still prepared, but we still have something we need to address.
I just want to remind the Board of Safety, you heard Chief Baldwin discuss the. The actions that led to the discovery and, and the beginning of an investigation at. And Burden Streets, and it was the fire department that made that initial response to that property. So I think credit goes to your, yeah, your department for recognizing that magnitude of what they walked into. All right, if there are no questions, moving on to Trinity, anything from?
Yeah, so I would like to recognize Tom Mahoney, too, that was the operations supervisor. That was on that same structure fire. So this lady was pretty significantly burned, some respiratory burns. And she was really too unstable to make it to a burn center, but he made the decision to take her to a level two trauma center. So it was a great decision on him and she did very well, so. And also, we're kind of completing our interagency training with the fire department. I think our last day of it is Friday, to get all the companies through. We're doing like our cardiac arrest simulation in the fire department is. Utilizing your Lucas device, so that training is going very well. Like I said, we should be done Friday, I think, with the last, last company.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeff?
I, I just have one question. When AED is hanging on a wall, who inspects them to make sure they're working? And how, how often do you inspect?
Yeah, so I, I imagine if it's in like a pharmacy or a store or something like that. Whoever the manufacturer that they purchased that through, I believe has probably got a. Contract with that facility, so they're the ones that come in. I mean, they have a pretty long shelf life also. These batteries are unbelievable. And especially, you know, so our basic life support units are opening those and checking them. Where those units are kind of just sitting there, never opened, so their, their battery life, I think, is longer. So I, I believe that's how that works.
Okay, so there's.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item twelve on the agenda. I'll introduce you to motion to consider business by the mayor and members of the Board of Public Safety. Second, I've commissioned the cloud, all in favor? So to the screen, anything this evening, Commissioner Caxell?
Ah, yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one thing. I know it goes back a little while, but I wanted to just commend the police department. Right after the armed robbery at Litchfield Bancorp, I happened to be with one of the vice presidents who really commended the job that the police did. From their response and their assurance of the staff and just shows the professionalism of our professionalism over the department. And very much appreciate that and just wanted to pass that along to the chief. Thank you, sorry.
Anything, Commissioner Benedetto?
Um, just one thing, National Night Out was, was good, success. It seems like there's no issues in the city of Torrance and besides a. Couple of lighthouses and a few car break-ins, so we're, we're doing good. Thank the police department for that. And you know, since, does Trinity Health would like a drone?
We'll talk to them.
Get one of your guys, Charlie. No, that was it. And the PAL, always a great event and that, that program's growing and the guys are doing a great job, so. Thank the city and the police department.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McLeod?
Yeah, I, I had just had one question in regards to, not a question, but tomorrow is the fire department interviews.
Yes.
Are there going to be anybody from the Board of Public Safety there?
So I believe, and I don't want to speak, I believe the fire subcommittee was invited. But.
So, so can I?
Yeah, please. Yep, you're on the subcommittee.
So we've been doing interviews at night and Chief, that was before you and. I can't talk for Commissioner Cogswell, but during the day, hours are tough for us to, for me to get there because of work hours. So I don't know who's scheduling, Jamie scheduling for during the day. If they could be changed to nighttime interviews, because we just had a round of interviews and they were done at night. Then all of a sudden, we're getting in during the day and it's tough for us, because we work.
Yes, this was not intentional to be on days. It's because of the compressed time that we have. We have to put thirteen candidates through in one day and we could not do that at night. There's no way we'd be able to, because we have to have the candidate ready to go to the academy by the twenty eighth. And that involves two sets of interviews, background checks, all their physicals and everything else. We really have a compressed thing. I can show you the timeline that we have. It's literally almost every other day they're doing something to get through this process. So we can't hold up the interview side of it this time, but it's not the intent to change it from nights to days. It's just to get through this one candidate, so that we can hopefully cut our overtime over the winter into the spring. But we will be looking at, I think, at least two, if not three, people potentially leaving sometime between the spring and early summer. And those will go back to traditional.
Okay, thank you.
Further, yeah, you stopped.
Just, just my concern, and I brought it up in one of the other meetings also, is the subcommittees are strictly. You know, it, it, your selection and, you know, that type of thing. And, and it's not, like it's etched at the, in the charter. And I would just, would like to see, no matter when, whether they're during the day or they're in the evening. Somebody from the board there. You know, I don't care if they're on the police subcommittee, the fire subcommittee. I mean, I, I'm perfectly happy, but I've been on the police subcommittee for five years now, you know? I am retired, so I, I do have more flexibility than everybody, you know, for better or for worse, you know, that type of thing. But I, I, I'm just disappointed that we can't be flexible enough to have. To try to have somebody there from the board. I mean, to me, that's part of our responsibility that we have to do that.
So there's an opportunity, as you heard Chief Board and say, this is the first round. And thirteen candidates are coming in. The, through that first round, the, you know, they'll boil this down to a number of candidates that they want to invite for a second interview. It's certainly an opportunity for the board members, if, if the fire subcommittee cannot attend. We can certainly extend the invitation and have some.
I don't want to be stepping on people's toes and. I'm, I'm just saying, I don't care how it works and who's there and who isn't. I, I think somebody should be there. I mean, I, I think it's our.
And it's, that goes.
That's all we don't get paid for.
Yeah, that wouldn't be my decision. I mean, if the, if the other committee, board members feel the same, then yeah, by all means.
Again, I don't want to, like I said, I'm not trying to infringe on other people's spot here, but.
When we get the date for that second round of interviews and the all call is sent back out to the fire subcommittee. If there are no members available, we can ask Jamie to reach out the rest.
I mean, it works both ways.
Could the second round be an evening? Potentially. Got to see how many, again, we're reading people out. We're anticipating about we, we left on the list from the thirteen. That might be manageable for an evening, but you're still going to look at at least four hours to possibly five. Because, you know, it's typically a half hour per candidate and then you have to kind of reset and move on to the next, so it will be a long night, but if, if there is a potential. But again, we may only six, you know, we, this is really the preliminary side of it. This is where you weed out things and you say, do they have all the qualifications? You know, how did they interview the person interviewing you? You know, I'm really going to part them.
Anything else this evening, Commissioner McLeod? Was that it?
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Battle?
Yes, I want to say thanks to everyone who participated in the National Night Out. It was really wonderful to see everyone just come, you know, my neighborhood, they definitely get excited about. You know, seeing everyone and having everyone be in the area. We want to say to the police and fire department, to the ambulance, thank you guys always for your service. You know, we hear from the community about what you guys do, so we are always very proud. Of our department, so thank you.
Commissioner.
I just have one more thing. I, I forgot to thank Lieutenant Rulo and Detective DeBlaine. Great guys and I wish them well in retirement. I know Rulo is going to be with us for a while, so.
Yeah, I was just saying the drop plan does work. You know, if we get him another year or two or three, that's the big win for us. I'm only going to add one thing. When you hear the police department or fire department discussing properties. I think it's important for the Board of Safety to realize that quite frequently, if not. More often than not, these properties aren't just some police enforcement issue. Or a fire department's issue. They, they're in violation of blight ordinances, they're in violation of building and fire code or ordinances. Regulations. So I just wanted this board to know that on our blight committee, we are fortunate that we have representation. From the police department and from the fire department. That meets with the other department heads, the other code enforcers twice a month to discuss any property. That a complaint is brought to the city for. And it's instrumental in our being able to move quickly. You know, it may be blight, but the more pressing issue may be a fire code issue, you know? So this is another example of how our public safety departments work with the city departments. To really clean up, clean up the city and more than one front. So just want to acknowledge that. If there are no other questions or comments, then I will introduce you to a adjourn.
Just have one more quick one?
Sure, yeah.
Um, next meeting, my understanding is there's an incredibly important softball game that night.
My goodness, yeah.
So.
Somebody I know thrown out the first pitch? So I'm kind of curious.
I don't have my phone with me, so what we can do is we can adjourn that potentially for a week. And we'll work with the city clerk's office to find a convenient date to adjourn it to, instead of canceling it entirely.
We know it now, so.
Yes.
You know, that's, that's.
We can start working on it. Good.
Or we can have the meeting there very briefly.
That's right, yeah.
However you want to do it.
We'll go on the field house. All right, now, good point, and I'm glad you brought it up. All right, Alan, did you want to adjourn?
So move, second.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod. Second, I'd Commissioner Benedetto, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.